Well, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Shad Faulkner can lead us in the invocation.
Let's all bow our heads and pray. Lord, we love you. Lord, we thank you, God, for that love. And, Lord, we understand and we know, God, that the only way that we can love you is because you first loved us. And, Lord, we praise you for that. Lord, we thank you, God, for your mercy. We thank you, God, for your grace. We thank you for your leadership, your guidance, Lord, all blessings that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for that. Lord, now, as we look, and, Lord, as you look down upon this scene, Father, I know that you are broadcasting your will. Lord, and you are letting us know your will. Father, I'd ask that we would be receptive unto your will. Lord, that we would be tuned into your will. And, Lord, that we would act upon your will in all the matters that would be presented unto us tonight. Thank you for each and every one that come out this way. Lord, we thank you, God, that you allowed us to get here safely. And, Lord, whenever we depart, we pray that you would allow us to get to our home safely. Lead, God, and direct us in all things we do. Again, we praise you for everything that you've ever done for us. In the name of Jesus, we do pray all of these things. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four, considering the agenda for adoption. I just have one change, because we're waiting on one type of bid to come in on Old Business Streets, the bid results for Hickory Ridge. We're looking at that two different ways, and we're still waiting on one number. So, we want to strike that from the agenda. They have a motion that we consider the agenda as amended.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Louis Ledbetter absent. Number five, consider for adoption the following meeting minutes from the regular council meeting of May 15, 2018. Do they have a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Acknowledgements, there are none. Old Business, Common Playhouse, Playhouse Management Proposals. You have those in your packets. I'm gonna let Phil come with his proposal, his recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We handed these proposals out a couple of months ago. We've had time to look over those. Everyone has, I think. I was asked to give the proposals and make the recommendation. I've done that. But you got all the proposals. Three of them are very similar in the type of proposal they are. It's just a proposal where we are paid a lease amount for the facility, and we'll be responsible for the maintenance and the utility for the facility. The other proposal is more based on how the management is at the Playhouse right now, as operated by the city. After viewing all these proposals, and they're all very well done, and I thank everybody for the attention to detail they put into their proposals. The recommendation I have is the proposal of Kelly Tam. Phil's option. For one, it brings the most money back into the city. That's the highest lease payment per month. And I do feel that they have a vested interest in trying to make the Playhouse a great success, as they are also the owners of the restaurant, located in the basement of the Playhouse. So, after viewing all factors, the money that will be coming in, I think it gives us the best shot at breaking even or possibly even clearing a little bit of profit on that property. So, my recommendation, and it's included in your packet, is the Kelly Tam proposal.
Do they have any discussion?
Mayor, have you had any other meetings or done anything else?
No. We just went by the proposals that were turned in a while back.
Are you not going to consider the Miss Kindred Kennedy that offered it the first time?
Well, that could be included in it, but it was a much lower number.
No, I don't really care who gets it. I just kinda wanted it to stay up in the playoffs.
Yeah, no. I agree with Phil's assessment. I think they definitely have a vested interest in, I think, from a business standpoint.
They want it to be proven. They want people involved.
And they're proven business leaders.
They probably want it busy every weekend.
They say that it's every endeavor.
Losing money, so. Yeah, all the time, as much as possible. I think it'll get the most use for the community as a whole.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from Kelly Tam.
Please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Next on the agenda is planning zoning annexation of the Lynnwood Development Group. This is to ratify action that was taken at the previous meeting, but we had to wait until the outcome of Sharon Springs. So, they have a motion to ratify previous action. Is that the way? You want the motion worded?
That, both the annexation as well as the rezoning of the property to highway business.
Just the property being moved.
Yeah, right. Yeah. In other words, we had done it, but we had the pending that potential, so.
If I remember correctly, though, Kevin, don't they have to come back to us when they actually decide the use?
Yes, yes. Yes, that was a condition.
It's not unconditional.
No, it is not an unconditional zoning. It was a zoning where we had that condition located on it. That's a recommendation of the planning commission made that was then adopted by the mayor and council.
Okay. I'll just make the motion to ratify the annexation and the rezoning of property.
Motion of second, please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Next on the agenda is amendment to the vape shop ordinance.
This one, Mr. Mayor, this is a very small amendment. What we did was made it more in line with some of your other ordinances. We made it such that if someone has their license suspended or revoked, a family member can't come back in who's related by blood or marriage and immediately get the same license. We also made it so that if a location has its license suspended or revoked, that location cannot be used for a vape shop until 12 months have passed from that suspension or revocation. That's the only amendment. Brings your ordinance in line with some other ordinances where we try and make sure that people aren't just trying to skirt around and get around our ordinances. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any discussion?
Is this, I can't remember. Are the ordinance in effect now? And they, even gas stations, they can't, they're not supposed to be showing visible?
So, it depends on what you're talking about. If it's just like a, if it's just like an e-cigarette, that's something you have to get the $25 permit for. But if you're gonna have bongs and hookahs and, you know, selling vape juice and, you know, these alternative, non-traditional tobacco paraphernalia is the term that we use, that's what has to be in a screened off room. An e-cigarette is not, that's an alternative nicotine product, but these non-traditional tobacco paraphernalia has to be in a screened off room.
And the gas stations have to give those?
Yeah, if they're gonna sell them, if they're gonna sell them.
January, July 1.
July 1.
So, they haven't had to do it yet. They're probably not even aware of it.
Right.
Because I just noticed it, and I was like, I don't think that's supposed to be doing that.
Had to give them.
Exactly.
I notice it every time I go in. I go.
Had to give them time.
Yeah, I know. And I just couldn't remember what or when or how that was gonna go.
Had a real good television story, I can't remember a while back about it. I mean, it's, you know.
I think they called Commissioner Mittles, too, and did an interview with her about it all, too.
But this change basically means that, you know, if somebody's selling to minors or selling illegal stuff, and we choose to revoke their license, they can't just get their buddy or their wife to turn right around and get a license and basically never be out of business and just open the same.
Right.
We're trying to keep from them getting around the...
Has some consequences.
Correct. Yeah. And hopefully that, I mean, that's a pretty stiff penalty. So, hopefully that would deter somebody from breaking the law and doing those kind of things.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the vape shop ordinance.
Please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Next is item eight, new business, IT request to advertise for bids, server virtualization.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. A couple of things I'd like to do. First of all, I'd like to ask permission to solicit bids to virtualize the servers that are located at City Hall and the PD. I'd like for you to understand what that is, so that whenever you see the bids, your draw drops to the floor, you'll understand exactly what we're talking about. I am more of a visual kind of person. That helps me see what a server virtualization is more than anything. This right here is the traditional architecture of servers, single, physical server, one you can put your hands on, a single operating system and an application that runs upon that server. A virtualized environment is a single, physical server, a piece of hardware that will allow you to run multiple virtual servers on that one server. So, you're actually getting more servers out of one than you would on a typical architecture up there. So, here's our current configuration. City Hall, we have two servers. One's a domain controller, one's a SQL server, application server. It basically runs all our software. The PD has five servers, so not a bad setup. I mean, it's what we're running off of right now with each server. I've had a backup that runs on each one of these servers. The problem with this, and Bill, he can testify to what has happened to us. Sometimes past the City Hall, we had our application server to die on this and it crashed. Well, I had a good backup, but it took two weeks to get the server in, to get it configured, to get the applications installed on it, get all the workstations connected back up. So, in the meantime, we had about, in that cycle, we had about 10,000 customers who didn't get a bill. They did get a bill eventually, but they couldn't because of the software wasn't running. Bill got to help write checks out to all employees because the servers were down. So, it's a vital part of what we do. And then, like I said, I had good backups. We got vital documents on this. So, here's a point of failure in our system if hardware goes down. Here's a point of failure, point of failure, point of failure. And, you know, the same thing with the PD. Any one of these servers goes down, they're stuck until I can get another server. So, we have a certain amount of redundancy, but it can be a lot better. So, here is what I'm proposing, or here's what I'm asking for you to allow me to solicit bids for. What we would do is take all of those servers at the police department and all the servers at City Hall. We would virtualize them. So, there would be one server that's running all seven servers, both the police department and City Hall, and it would be running all of those applications. So, the beauty of this thing is, is let's say we have a virus that attacks the SQL server at City Hall. With a virtual environment like this, I can take that server completely down and restore it within a minute. Nobody at City Hall ever knew anything ever happened. And had we done that with the previous architecture, well, that'd been days, you know, for me to get back where we were. So, that's with one server within the virtual environment. Well, let's just say that this server kicked out altogether. Well, with the system that I'm owning, we've got a redundant server. So, if this server kicks out, this server comes back online. Nobody ever knew. We're always up. Let's say even worse happens. City Hall goes up, gets knocked off the face of the earth. I've got another server offsite where everything is. So, this is a mirror of this, and this is a mirror of this. So, we've got triple redundancy built in this top system right here. So, what's gonna happen is, we've already got, on the previous one, I didn't show you, we've already got a fiber that stretched between City Hall and the police department. All the workstations from the police department will work off these servers. Everything in City Hall will work off these servers. But the other thing will happen is I can spin up these servers and everybody can get access through it, through the internet, through a link that I'll be able to get to them. That is ideal, in my opinion, for the city of coming as far as a server and a network architecture out there. In talking with lots of people that have done this already, and typically most people are doing this, you're looking at a 97% of time. That's even in the worst failure you could think of. So, I think it's worth doing. And if y'all got any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you've got on it, but I think it's ideal.
Is this the cloud?
It's not a cloud. No, this, all this is, this is all.
That thing?
Yeah, that's an option. It is an option. But that also comes at a monthly cost, at a premium. So, all of this, and my idea for the offsite location is a raw water intake is like Fort Knox. It's down there. It's got its own battery backup. It's got its own generator. And you can hardly get to some block building, completely air-conditioned. So, that's my idea for offsite location. So, that would not be in flag. That is an option, but all of these servers are on-prem.
I've got a question. You said if one of the virtual servers went out, you could replace it in just a few minutes?
Yes, I could. It's not, so, the backups that are happening, like I said, I've got backups that's going on right now, but the backups that are happening, these servers aren't physical servers. They don't have memory. They don't have hard drives. They don't have video cards and network cards and all these things. It's just kind of, it is a server as far as all the workstations in the network is concerned, but it's just kind of a piece of software sitting out there. So, I can take that thing out, and I've got a backup, which is an exact replica that's being backed up every hour. So, let's say, say in the case of Atlanta, when they got hit by that crypto lottery. So, I could take and know whenever the virus hit, take that server completely out and back it up to a point in time when I knew that the virus hadn't hit, restore it, and it would be back in. It's hard to, it's hard to grasp, but it's not actually a physical server. It's virtual. And I can, well, that was a quote that was given to me. A guy said, "You can take one down and spin it up in a minute." I said, "In 60 seconds, I can do that." He says, "60 seconds from the time that you know that the problem's happening, you can have that server rebuilt."
So, will there be any time to switch everything over? Is anything like that?
Oh, yeah.
Or is it retraining of different system?
Not exactly retraining. So, a part of the service of doing this is the bid will be for all hardware, all software, and for services for said company to help us do the conversion. Because honestly, we just, we don't have the staff to tackle something like that. Because I'd have to take everybody off to build this thing, and then while everything else is going on in City Hall and everywhere else, you know, we're gonna have to have somebody to troubleshoot that. But these people will come in and help us build it. So, what's gonna happen is, our network is gonna be maintained the way that it is. We're gonna build this network separately, and then one night, we're gonna come in and flip the switch. We're gonna go from the physical environment to the virtual environment. So, it will take some time, but as far as the city of coming being down, there will be no downtime.
And your employees won't have any trouble?
No, they'll never know that it happened, as a matter of fact. So, and another beautiful thing about this, let's say we build it in five years. That's not enough. That model is scalable. So, I can come and add another node or another server to that, and the resources that are available on the new server then gets pushed out to the virtual server. So, and then the other good thing about that, too, is one of your old servers are old. You take it out, put another one in, and you're still up. So, it's the best of all the world, really.
That's hard to understand.
Yeah, well, it is.
And they just have the physical servers. They weren't doing anything like that.
Well, I don't know what they have, but I do know that...
Just as an example.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know what the city of Atlanta has, but I do know, with the backups that I'm doing right now, we did get hit at the police department a while back, well, a couple of years ago, I guess it was, with a similar type virus. And the backups I do are not just data only. It's a snapshot of the server. So, we were able to just totally dump everything that was on the server, rebuild it, and it took about four hours to do. But the virus is totally gone. I'm not saying I know better than the IT people of Atlanta. I'm not saying I do, but it just seems like to me that would be a good way to do it, if they were not doing it.
So, my question is on the fiber, is if we build a new police station, you still gotta be connected with fiber?
You do. So, these fibers are not ours. So, currently, we have a 10-meg fiber that we lease from Comcast. And it's just, they take care of it. If it gets cut, they put it back. We don't have to worry about it. So, all we'd have to do is just tell Comcast, "I need this fiber run here," and we'll make the adjustments on our routers and everything. We'll just take one down.
And have you got the fiber you need to go to the lake?
No, that would also be part of the deal. We will have to upgrade from the 10-meg to the 1-gig, because obviously, there's gonna be a lot more traffic across, you know, that line than there is today. As a matter of fact, if we build a new police...
I'm saying to the intake. Is there...
It's 100 meg at this point in time, but I would, in talking with Comcast, they can give us, as we add more services, they can give us a better price. So, it won't be a big price difference from 100 meg to a gig, but it will be from a 10.
But the capabilities there is what I'm asking.
The capability is there, absolutely. All we gotta do is tell them, they turn up a switch, and then the bandwidth is there. But going back to the police department, this would be an easy transfer for the police department, because there's no physical servers at the police department. I mean, we could spin out those servers anywhere.
If anything happened to you, would anybody else know how to do this?
I got my man Tommy Markin right there.
Okay.
I tried to write everything down, so.
Is this something we've wanted to start getting into for a while, and is it a budget? I mean...
Yeah, it's quite an expense, but you get a lot for it, too. So, we've been talking about it for a while and actually been throwing around. And, you know, I don't enter into something that I don't know anything about. So, I've been studying it a while, too. There's a lot of different ways to go about this. And the way that I wanna present it to the people that wants to come bid is, here's my problem. You present me a solution, and I'll look at the best solution for this price.
Does it improve speed or...
Absolutely.
Just when I get storage capabilities, everything?
Well, it's, again, it's scalable.
You got that cloud. You got that cloud.
It just goes up there.
Just goes up there.
Well, before with the old architecture, I would have to upgrade servers individually. This way, we upgrade one server, then everybody gets the benefit.
The cost, if you have to scale up, is much less dependent on purchase, new physical servers?
Yes and no. Because, yes, because you don't have to do something to each individual server. But no, these servers aren't just regular servers either. It's not like I can take one of my SQL server that's down here now. It can't become a part of that cluster because it doesn't have enough resources. So, we're talking about mega servers, I guess, if you would, so.
Well, then tie into the clock tower and make sure that the clock stays.
Virtual clock tower.
Where are we on that, by the way?
Well, you said the minute that we ordered, we're two months out. We're getting about, we're close to two months right now, so we need to call and see where we're at. But I was told, as a matter of fact, this is pretty interesting, that the movement that they are making for us, so they didn't pull this off the shelf. It was made in France and shipped to us. They told them that's the last movement they're making, so that's it.
You'll be hunting a new one.
We got the last one.
Wow. Any other questions?
We're good.
So, we're good for two more months till the next one goes out.
Have it covered?
Phil's got a plan.
Yeah, we can paint a smiley face and move the wheels. See, we'll go V H. Or we can put like a revolving advertising pole to make it a part.
LED signs. Let it be like the Apple Watch, you know? It's just kind of...
All right. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the request to advertise for bids.
Please vote. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, guys.
Next is item B, Streets Request to Advertise for Bids Asphalt Resurfacing.
The purpose of this item is to get an asphalt quote for resurfacing mainly patching and smaller jobs throughout the year. We got one last year, and we've used that quote for numerous projects. That quote's about to run out soon. We'll have to do that if the board approves that.
Any discussion?
Is it the same as the others?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go out and get quotes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Just to keep it up.
Make a motion where you request to advertise for bids for the asphalt.
Second, please vote. Motion carries 4-0. Next is the Common Fairgrounds, the Fair Board Resolution and Appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we were tasked with compiling a list of nominees to be on the Fair Board. You all got me some names that you had contacted to see if they were interested in doing that. And I also was told to call the members that were on the old boards to see if any of them had interest. I've got my list now. We've got 13 names that were mentioned. As you may remember, the board is supposed to be comprised of anywhere between 5 to 20 individuals. So, I've got 13 here. They're all, all have the ability to serve on the board. And I'll read their names just so we can have them in the record. Michelle Daniels, Mary Helen McGruder, Catherine Amos, Connie May, Rupert Sexton, Shaqib Ali, Carrie Patterson, Steve Bennett, Quincy Holton, Ralph Perry, Russ Sauls, Eric Bennett, and Kelly Lamb. And one thing we need to do is we need to appoint one to be the acting president and one to be the acting secretary, so they can get organized and form the board where they'd like to.
We still had anybody, too, that?
Yeah.
If we can have up to 20.
About one.
Did anybody from that list indicate they want to be president?
Nobody volunteered for it. I think they want somebody that says, "Nah, I don't want it."
Catherine and Mary Helen are here, so.
It can be interim president.
Right.
See, they're back here.
I got, I got, I got a volunteer back there.
So, what name, Linda would like to add another name?
Julie Tressler.
Julie Tressler.
Okay. And our maximum is 20, isn't it, Kevin?
Yeah, that would be 14.
Right. And what you need is a motion to approve all these people, and then do a second motion to name your interim president and secretary until they can get together, organize, and choose their own officers.
Is there anybody on the list?
In other words, if you're putting interim, then they can still change that.
Anybody other thoughts on the list?
The only thought I would have, as far as just the interim, would be, and I don't even know her, but Michelle Daniels, because of being a director of tourism, just seems like a natural fit.
Yeah, I spoke to her on the phone, and she was really excited about it.
But she's probably got enough to do.
I've never met her. I don't know who she is, but...
If we can do it as interim, at least to get it organized amongst the...
That's what, exactly. That's what you're doing here. That's all we're doing. They're gonna choose their own president, vice president, secretary, whatever they wanna do.
So, like Kevin said, we gotta make the motion just to approve the list and then a second.
Right. I have a motion to approve this list of names with the one addition.
Make a motion to approve the list.
Motion by Chad, second. By Jason, please vote. Motion carries 4-0.
I'll make the motion to appoint Michelle Daniels as the interim president.
Please vote. Motion carries for Michelle Daniels to be the interim president and have a motion for a secretary.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Helen McGruder.
She's here.
I got a wing, so I don't think she, I don't think she is against that. Please vote. Motion... Motion carries four oh for Mary Helen McGruder to be the interim secretary. Thank you very much. So, next is announcements, the upcoming Playhouse Shows, the Bird Dogs Twenty Eighteen Everly Brothers Tribute, June the ninth at three and eight o'clock. Upcoming Fairground Events, Friday's at the Fairgrounds, June fifteenth from, it's always debatable, from five to ten, or six to ten. If you get there at five, something will be going on. And Rosati's, the Music Festival, Coming Rock of Ages, from June sixteenth. That'll be at eleven AM to eleven PM. And I believe we have executive session.
For pending or threatened litigation, yes, certainly.
So, the motion that we adjourned the meeting, or go into executive session, sorry.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Thank everyone for coming out.